This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. Welcome to the Harwich Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, May 25th, 2021. This meeting is being held via remote participation. You can join us from a go-to-meeting link on the town website, and also dial in at the information on that same location. I'd like to have our call to order first pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Harwich Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings as provided for in the order. I'd like to take a roll call of attendance, please. Bill Stolz is not here. Arthur Rouse is not here. Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Joe McCarland is not here. David Harris?
David Harris, here.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, here.
Duncan Berry, here. Very good. One quick question regarding to our regarding our call to order here. Mr. Eidman, will we be moving on to in-person meetings effective the 29th of this month and thereafter?
It's a great question. The state of the law now is that the open meeting law exception that we've had in place since the pandemic will end on the 15th of June, which is basically the end of the emergency declaration. Anecdotally, I understand that the Mass Municipal Association might be drafting some legislation to try to introduce to the general court to make some of the remote participation procedures that we had during the pandemic permanent, but there's no guarantee that will happen. So without knowing any more, I would expect that we won't have a meeting on the 8th of June, but I would expect that the meeting on the 22nd of June will be in person in the Griffin Room.
Okay. Good to know. Please mark your calendars accordingly. So I'd like to go to public hearing section of our agenda, and our one item in that agenda slot is for PB 2021-09, Seagulls LLC, Ronald Cote, Connor Cummings as applicants, Route 28 NRT, Low York TR, seek approval of a use special permit for restaurant, fast food slash takeout pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Sections 325-09, -13, -14.0, and -51. Properties located at 537 Route 28, Unit 1C, MAP 14, Parcel U5-1 in the C-V and RH1 zoning districts. Let's hear from the applicants, Mr. Cote and Cummings.
So we are looking to open an ice cream shop on Main Street in Harwich Port located at 537 Route 28. We would also like to have a small shopping area about 12 feet long inside for people to buy some products that I make myself. We are also looking to add two Adirondack chairs in front of our unit, which are marked on the plans that we submitted earlier.
Okay. Is that the end of your presentation?
Yeah, I'm not really sure what else to present that wasn't in the materials. I haven't done this before.
Okay, all right. Well, usually what we, well, I don't know. John, would you like to give the staff report on this?
Absolutely, and I understand why the applicants here may be short of words. And if you'll indulge me on a little commentary before I get into the specific facts of the case, I'll say that, you know, there are times when your zoning bylaws will have very important regulations of general application. However, sometimes when you apply those regulations of general application, you see that it catches certain projects up, even though those projects really are of very little impact, and I think it's fair to say this is one of those projects. It's important to have regulations concerning fast food takeout restaurants in the town. It is a special permit. It is a site plan special permit. At the same time, this particular project, there's very little impact or any discernible change to the property, given this particular use. There is neither proposed nor required a change in the site, no need in change in parking, no need to change the septic. I think the sum total of the changes outside are the addition of these two Adirondack chairs along Route 28. And inside, really, it really is just, you know, an internal fit out of the existing unit to have this ice cream use. And it really is kind of a quirk that they're even before you. They technically fit into the definition of fast food takeout restaurant. In this building, in this subdivided unit of the building, there actually was a fast food takeout component to a sit-down restaurant. The unit was then divided. The reason they need a special permit here for the fast food takeout is it's proposed as a principal use, not an accessory use as it was before. So, you know, I'll go over, you know, I prepared a staff report. And, you know, I'll give another caveat. I will not always be so presumptuous as I have been in this case, or I even was on May 11th. Given what I see as really the minimal amount of change and the minimal amount of impacts here, I was comfortable giving you what my recommended findings and conditions were, and even my recommendation about the disposition of the case. I did that as well at the last hearing we had on the Cape Cod Oil, given that you had already had a hearing on it, and given that that use was largely circumscribed by the requirements of the bylaw. The use was allowed of right, and yet very little discretion left under a site plan special permit review. For the same, for different reasons, I'm being admittedly presumptuous here. I will not always be so presumptuous. But it's, it's my opinion that there's, there's very little discernible change with the property, very little impacts associated with this use. The recommended findings I have would help you support a decision, especially in this case, as I see it, decision to grant the use special permit subject to the findings and conditions in this staff report. I think the findings that are probably kind of most important to looking at this particular application begin at the beginning of the page on the staff report and are numbered 10 and 11. The total number of seats in the restaurant are six. They have tables associated with them. And the proposal deals almost entirely with interior fit out of the unit for the proposed ice cream use within the existing building. No physical site, exterior architectural or lighting changes are proposed. No parking changes are necessary or proposed. No site infrastructure that is stormwater or septic changes are necessary or proposed. This proposed use is appropriate in Harwich Port, which is a dense mixed-use walkable village. There are uses similar and complementary to the proposed use on-site on neighboring properties and throughout the village of Harwich Port. Now, the specific findings the bylaw calls you to make are kind of fall from those findings of fact. The use is developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The site is an appropriate location for such proposed use. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use, including appropriate sewage treatment facilities which exist. The proposed use will not adversely impact traffic flow and safety. Given that a lot of the traffic and parking numbers are based on seats, and the seats are fixed in this building, there's really no need to do anything with the parking or look at a traffic study. The proposed use will be compatible with surrounding land uses, and the proposal does not substantially change the relationship of the structure to the site and to abutting properties and structures. And accordingly, the proposal does not require site plan special permit review. And then the conditions I suggest of approval are relatively general in nature, that the, the use and development has to be undertaken with the plans referenced in, in one of the recommended findings. Those are the application, the plans in the application materials. The decision itself will run with the property. It's not personal to the applicants. And the decision has to be recorded before it's effective with the registry of deeds. And the, I guess the special condition is, I think they may already have a sign up front, but this is just probably stating something that's axiomatic. The applicant shall design and permit any proposed exterior signs in accordance with the applicable requirements of the Harwich Code. So with that, it's, it's my recommendation to you, though it's your decision to make, that in case 2021-09, which is the use special permit for the fast food takeout restaurant, that you move to adopt the recommended findings and conditions set out in the staff report and grant a use special permit subject to those conditions of approval. Happy to answer any further questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Eidman. Do we have any comments and questions by the board?
Mr. Chairman?
I was, let me just, I see Mary's got her hand up.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Through you to John. So, John, it looks like in looking at the recommended findings, I know you said 10 and 11. The rest just look like the facts, right? They're the, they're the facts of the situation before us and, and, and aren't really necessary for, for our use special permit findings of fact? Or would you prefer to see everything in, in a, in a use special permit?
No, I think all these findings are important to include in a decision. It's my opinion at least, and we went through this at the last hearing. I think you can, because this is in writing, it's available to the public. You've reviewed it. I think the finding can just be to move to adopt the find, the recommended findings and conditions as written. I don't think you need to make a motion for each and every one of those. That's up to you. It's up to your practice, but that's what I've done kind of consistently throughout my career in different land use decisions. And, you know, I think it's appropriate. But I think I would recommend that all of those recommended findings be included. I just went over a few of them because I didn't want to bore you to tears.
No, and that's fine. Typically, our practice has been to, we would vote to close the public hearing. We would then make a motion to adopt the findings of fact. We would then make a motion to do the use special permit. And because it's a waiver of site plan, typically the site plan review special permit would come last. And presumably in this situation, a waiver of site plan would come last. So I don't mind reading them all and whatever the, the pleasure of the board is as far as is how they want to see it. I can, we can, I'm happy to do it either way. Typically, we've read them all out, and I have no problem with that. I just wanted to get clear on what your practice was, so.
Excellent. Craig, I noticed you wanted to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding signage, John, the, under recommended conditions of approval number four is applicant shall design and permit any proposed exterior signs in accord with the applicable requirements of the Harwich Code. And I know, I think it's probably going back about two years ago now. I think we established some regulations regarding sign boards on the street and the size that they can be. So obviously, clearly, that's an exterior sign. And I think at that time, there was also discussion about size, and that's one of the requirements. And I can't quote to you what it, what the sizes are. But, and maybe this is being picky, but if, if anyone were to put a sign on the inside of a window that's viewed from the outside, are they within their rights? Because in this recommended condition of approval, we only reference exterior signs. But we also recognize the code according to the code. So maybe it's a moot point.
I think it's an interesting point through you, Mr. Chair. Think window signs are still considered exterior signs under the zoning code?
Great.
Thank you.
Your hand up.
It's my recollection that the building official is responsible for enforcement of the signs, and the permits go through the building official. I believe there are already signs up there. They're very small, so they're within the six square feet.
Right.
So also with respect to the question of whether or not we read everything into the record. When I first joined the board, I was surprised that we were going through the process of reading all that. It of course can be, you know, it, it, it's, it's one thing for controversial issues to be read and discussed, but it seemed to be me that, that if it's a part of the public record through the minutes and the preparation documents for the meeting, that that would be adequate.
I agree with the use of Occam's razor in this case. Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, I totally agree that it is public record. You know, everything's there in print if people want it. And I think in the interest of time, especially some of those longer ones that we get, you know, a whole bunch of conditions and whatnot, you know, as written works for me. And we did it, I think, last meeting. Give it a test run. So.
Mary?
So I just through you, Mr. Chair, would like to thank Mr. Eidman for the suggestion and my, my fellow board members for the concurrence. Because I think it works perfectly fine, referring to the documentation. And I'm happy to not have to read as much. To Mr. Eidman, with the, the Adirondack chairs, I know we have, we had this conversation last year when we were talking about outdoor space and outdoor signage. Is there, does the building own property that is not part of the public way and the sidewalk for the, for the placement of the Adirondack chairs? That was the only thing I wasn't sure of, whether that sidewalk was deep enough and whether they, because we were very specific. I know with a lot of the other businesses that if they, if they had title to the, and it wasn't part of the public way, then they could put their signs there and, you know, likewise a chair there. But if it was part of the public way, they couldn't.
Through you, Mr. Chair. You, you have a very good recollection, Mary. And I agree with you. The placement of furniture is very similar to the treatment of portable signs under zoning bylaw. I did ensure that the Adirondack chairs would be outside the layout of Main Street or Route 28. So there is space. Put those Adirondack chairs close to the building and outside layout of Route 28.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any further comments from the board? Is there anybody in the public that would like to weigh in on the matter? I don't think we have anybody online. Perhaps we can get a motion to close the hearing?
No moves.
Wait a second.
Second.
Peterson. Do a roll call vote. Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. It's unanimous. So I'd like to then leave this to Ms. Maslowsky for any crafting of economic, economic findings of fact.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the recommended findings as set forth in the staff report dated May 25th, 2021 for PB 2021-09, Seagulls LLC.
Do I have a second?
Second. Craig Chadwick.
I have a second by Mr. Chadwick. Any discussion? Hearing none? Mr. Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Thank you. Ms. Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. It's unanimous. Do we have a motion for a determination?
I move that we adopt, I'm sorry, that we grant a use special permit subject to the following conditions of approval. One, that the proposed use and development shall be undertaken consistent with the plans referenced in the application material set out above. Two, that this decision shall run with the property. Three, that this decision shall not be effective until it is recorded with the Department of Municipal County Registry of Deeds. And four, that the applicant shall design and permit any proposed exterior signs in accordance with the applicable requirements of the Harwich Code.
Do I have a second?
Craig Chadwick, second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's do our roll call. Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. It's unanimous. Very good. Do we, do we agree that the waiver, the site plan review was superfluous in this point?
Nope. No, we have the second set of votes. At least I think it's the second set of votes.
All right.
I'm sorry. Moreover, Mr. Chair, I think you actually have to open the meeting on that.
Right.
Oh, excuse me. Pardon me. So we are done then with public hearing PB 2021-09, which is now closed and voted on. I'd like to open a public meeting for new business. Item number one being PB 2021-11, Seagulls LLC, Ronald Cote, Connor Cummings as applicants, Route 28 NRT, Low York TR, seek approval for, of a waiver site plan for a new restaurant, fast food slash takeout use pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Sections 325-55F. Properties located at 537 Route 28, Unit 1C, MAP 14, Parcel U5-1 in the C-V and RH-1 zoning districts. So let us go back to the applicant. Or the.
I don't think you need to. So, Mr. Chair, I would just make a motion to, that we adopt the recommended findings of fact set out herein in the staff report dated May 25th, 2021, for PB 2021-11, Seagulls LLC as applicants.
Second.
David Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's do a roll call vote. Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we grant a waiver from site plan review based on the adoption of the recommended findings and the fact that the, that the application meets the criteria for a waiver of site plan under the Harwich Code.
David Harris, second.
Thank you, David. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote with, starting with Mr. Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. It's unanimous. Very good. Congratulations, Mr. Cummings and Cote.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. But I'd like to now discuss the minutes from April 13th to 27th, as well as the May 8th and May 11th minutes. I cannot comment on the May 11th minutes, but everything else looked good to me. Any other comments?
I'd to make a motion to approve the minutes as written for May 11th and April.
Probably have to do these separately because Mary and Duncan can't vote on one.
That's correct.
Is that April 13th, 2017? It should be April 13th, 2021, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mary?
Through you to, to Mr. Eidman. I don't think there's a restriction on, on us from voting. You can, just because you weren't at a meeting doesn't mean you can't approve the minute.
Oh, that's my understanding as well.
So I think to that end, I think you can do it in one motion.
Great. We have a mo.
I stand corrected, or sit corrected, actually.
I'll amend my, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of April 13th, 2021, April 27th, 2021, May 8th, 2021, and May 11th, 2021.
Craig Chadwick, second.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. Any further comments? So roll call vote. Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. It's unanimous. Correspondence, Mass Division of Fisheries and Wildlife Draft Priority Habitat Map. Is this for you, Mr. Eidman?
I'll give you a little primer on it. I mean, this is an important issue, especially as the planning board is involved with open space planning for the town. I have a hard time making some recommendation to you, though, because reviewing the new map, there's no way to differentiate it from the old map unless you have the old map in front of you. So I can't really give you kind of my informed opinion. As a, as a seat of the pants thing, it looks to me like the map, the priority habitat areas on the map have been reduced in size in certain areas. But again, I have no way of, I have no way of telling, telling that without comparing it to the old map. This gets updated about every five years or so. You can, you can have some assurance, though, that this is, I think it's indirectly related, but still important to what the planning board does, but directly related to what the Conservation Commission does. And I have spoken to Amy Yu, the conservation agent, and she will be following this remapping issue as she always does.
That sounds good. I actually was unable to open the, the link for the, to actually to view the document. So we'll take it as a matter of course that this is something to keep put on the map for us, so to speak, if you'll pardon the consistency of the metaphor, but not to act on. Very good. Any other comment on this matter? Do we have any old business before the board?
I do have one other matter, and I don't know if this fell into correspondence. Elaine gave this to me, and she's out, you know, of the office now. But there's going to be a 40B if any of you are interested. I know the Zoning Board of Appeals has direct jurisdiction over it, but it still should be an important matter generally to a planning board. There's going to be a 40B workshop put on by the Citizens Planning Trainer Training Collaborative, June 14th, 6:00 PM online. So if you'll reach out to myself or Elaine to let me know whether any of you are interested, we have funding for that as well. It's about $20 a person. And the, the person who's actually doing it is a real expert in this area, Judy Barrett. Her, I think I've participated in her seminars before. This is online, and she's a very engaging speaker, very knowledgeable as well in the area.
John, this Dave, can you send us a, an email summarizing what you just told us for, to prompt us?
Of course.
Yeah, you can sign me up. That's a good date. Mondays. Is this like an afternoon webinar thing?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. Oh, perfect. Okay, great. Yeah. Okie doke. Do we have any briefings or? Okie doke. Do we have any briefings or reports? Any CPC, Mary, or?
All of the CPC applications that went forward got approved. Everything that got a CPC recommendation, that is. So, you know, we'll, we'll be fledging forward with that once the funding all comes in and the projects can get started. So the majority of the money this year went to historic preservation projects, particularly the, the Brooks Academy Museum, which, as we all know, is in desperate need of a significant amount of work. And based on the costs associated with the library, it, you know, it was a good year, I think, to put money towards it as it bookends the historic district. So looking forward to seeing that project get started and, and get moving forward. The gentleman that they had hired as a consultant really seems to, he gave a good presentation before both historic and, and CPC when, when he was presenting kind of his findings of going through the building. So looking forward to seeing that building come back into nice shape again.
Absolutely. Now, does Joe, does simply have to like draft up the RFPs for that to get the wheels turning on that?
So that's part of what will happen, yes. They'll have to, you know, once the, depending on whether the funds are either available now or they'll be available July 1st, so they'll do the RFPs to, to get moving on, on the engineering work and, and on the construction side, so. So a lot to be done still, but hopefully that will, that will get moving.
Yep.
The original, there was an original 150,000 that was approved. I'm trying to think, I think it was two years ago. And they, because of COVID, I think, was part of the reason they didn't make a lot of headway on the engineering portion of it last year. So that added some money that they received this year at town meeting should, they should be able to get started and start the project moving. And it really looks like the project will be a, you know, a hundred-year project. You know, once you, once you get the full basement cut into that building, it, it should be in good stead for many generations to come, as opposed to stopgap measures that are only going to last for 10 or 20 years.
Right. That's great. Any additional comment? Alright, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
We're moved.
No moves. Seconds.
We have a second. We have a motion. We have a vote. Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Duncan Berry, it's unanimous. I thank you for your patience. I appreciate you coming and joining us, Alan.
Yeah, I'm, sorry.